First item on our agenda will be the pledges. They stand.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, just as for all.
Now, Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Okay, today we have several matters on the consent agenda. The first is case file number 2024-84P. This involves a proposed final plat of Yukon Ridge Commercial, third filing, being 4.78 acres located in Section 2, Block 42, T2S, TNP Railway Company Survey, generally located on the south side of Yukon Road and approximately 1,200 feet west of North Grandview. Everybody have a chance to look at that? Comment for motion?
For approval.
Second?
Second.
Favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Case file number 2024-85P is a final plat of Shiloh Square, eighth filing, being 3.44 acres of land in Section 4, Block 41, T2S, TNP Railway Company Survey. It is generally located on the southwest corner of the intersection of East 56th Street and Lions Gate Access. Questions or a motion?
Move for approval.
Have a motion, there's a second.
Second.
Favor say aye?
Aye.
Going on, case file number 2024-105P. This is a final plat of Yukon Ridge, first filing, Phase 4, being 27.64 acres in Section 2, Block 42, T2S, TNP Railway Company Survey, generally located northwest corner of the intersection of Blue Bell Drive and East 61st Street. Comment or motion?
Move for approval.
Second? Motion second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Going on, case file number 2024-106P. This is the proposed final plat of Windmill Crossing addition, ninth filing, being 27.02 acres situated in Sections 27 and 28, Block 41, T1S, TNP Railway Company Survey, generally located on the northeast corner of the intersection of Andrews Highway and East 100th Street.
Move for approval.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, going on. Okay, now we are at case file number 2024-03Z. The next few cases will be public hearings. Yes ma'am?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner. The applicant Edgar Rodriguez is requesting a zone change from Single Family 3, Single Family 3 Residence District 3 to Plan Development District on Lots 1 through 7, Block 14, Lemrod Edition. The properties to the north are also Zone Single Family 3, as well as to the east, Single Family 3, south is Single Family 2, and west is Single Family 3. The property involved in this request is located on the east side of Fontana Street, approximately 460 feet south of Corona Circle. The site is currently designated Single Family 3, as I had mentioned, and is currently vacant and undeveloped. The applicant Edgar Rodriguez with Agent N3 Brito is seeking a zone change to create residential development in the area. The proposed development will be a maximum two-story buildings with one unit consisting of two residences per lot. Each building will have one carport with an additional parking space to the site. Carports will be accessible from the front only. The proposed buildings will be built and sold off, not being units for rent. For the proposed Plan Development District, the following standards apply. They shall adhere to setbacks as recorded on the property's plat. Shall require a minimum of five feet rear yard setback. Administrative site plan approval shall be required prior to submission of a building permit application. Shall comply with all fire and building inspections codes and ordinances, and shall comply with the Plan Development District standards and regulations. Using the city's identified priorities contained in the City of Odessa's comprehensive plan to evaluate zoning amendments, the following comments are offered. For comprehensiveness, this request is not out of line with the City of Odessa's comprehensive plan. The property is located near Single Family 3 Residential Zoning District. Livability, the proposed zoning would not have a negative impact on the site or surrounding properties, and the proposed development is not out of line with development in the area. For reasonableness, the proposed zoning district will facilitate a reasonable transition between land uses of varying intensities and will not create a conflict to the existing land users in the area. From planning, if approved, planning recommends the following conditions, A through E, which shall adhere to setbacks as recorded on the property's plat. Shall require a minimum of five feet rear yard setback. An administrative site plan approval shall re-require prior to submission of a building permit application. Shall comply with all fire and building inspection codes and ordinances, and shall comply with all Plan Development District standards and regulations. And I'm here for any questions.
Any questions, your staff?
And now, I will tell you that normally on a Plan Development zoning district proposed, we do require a site plan. Mr. Brito will be supplying that prior to obtaining a building permit. That plan, that site plan will need to be routed to all the necessary departments for approval prior to obtaining a building permit.
Okay, we're doing a rezoning today.
Correct.
A lot of times, the next step would be we have a plat of the property. Because it's Plan Development, that's going to be a site plan approved?
There's a plat already, the plat has already been done previously because it was a Single Family 3 zoned, so they platted the area as well. So the area has been platted. However, he, they are, the owner wants to rezone to Plan Development. And normally in a Plan Development, when changing to Plan Development, does require a site plan of the proposed or proposed use. However, in this situation, they are wanting to go ahead and see if the Plan Development zoning district will apply or is approved first, and then they will submit the site plan. Now, when they do submit a site plan, it would have to be tailed as required by the Plan Development, the zoning ordinance for Plan Development, and it will have to be routed to all departments before anything is approved as far as for residential permit.
Good, thank you. Any other questions, your staff?
Yeah, well, there's some issues with the property at one time. I remember when this came about, but...
Yes, we did, and I'm sorry, I forgot to mention that. We did send out notices to surrounding properties. There were 25 notices sent for denials and one, zero approvals and one returned. Let me go ahead and pass you the cards. Just a second.
I remember this one, right next door to Rocket.
I'm sorry?
Right across this, right across this street.
Is this going to be a trailer park?
I'm sorry?
Is this, is this going to be like a mobile home?
No, it's not going to be mobile homes. What the consultant has indicated, they're going to be townhomes. And I'll have Mr. Brito come up and kind of elaborate on that. Okay, yes, open number, it is a public hearing.
Yeah, we're not. Where did they get the idea that there was going to be mobile homes?
I'm not sure, ma'am.
With the way the plat looks, there are, what, seven lots? So you'd think seven houses, single family. But the Plan Development would allow for greater density of...
Yes, so when it wasn't, yes. So when it was initially platted and zoned, it was under the proposed, under the understanding that it was a proposed for single-family dwellings. That way, it was divided into seven lots. However, they're requesting a zone change because they want townhomes. One unit with two homes together.
Will that change the plat, or the plat stay the same?
The plat stays the same.
So it doesn't come back to us as a body?
No, it doesn't come back as far as replating is concerned. Under Plan Development, townhomes aren't allowed use. They would just need to abide by the ordinance as far as setbacks, setbacks are concerned.
Any other questions, your staff?
So the townhomes would be like little duplexes together?
Similar to, I think, well, if you open the public hearing, Mr. Brito can kind of elaborate on that.
All right, thank you. All right, I would note that this is a public hearing, and if there's anyone in the audience today that wishes to speak in favor of this matter, I think we had a gentleman come forward, you the applicant? If you'd give us your name?
Name is Roberto Brito III. I'm with N3 Brito, which is a consultant for Mr. Edgar Rodriguez, and we're the ones representing him. And so, what happened when we platted this initially, all the zone changes kind of changed a little bit, even in the plating processes. And by the time this got approved, it just kind of got dumped into, since everything else was SF3 in that area, that was what it was zoned as initially. That wasn't our intention to begin with. We were, we were wanting to do townhomes along the Conover side and then single families on that inside cul-de-sac side. So that's why we brought this back to the, to the city, so we could get a zone change to PD to do these, to do this residential development. Now, we have gone through the whole process, just a little bit of background. The plat has been approved, the way it was laid out. We have paving plans approved. We have water, sewer, all those plans have been approved, and we're trying to get under construction. There's just been a little bit of holdup on the city side with the SW3P stuff. But as soon as that gets cleared up, then all of those utilities will be installed. The alley, we did create a new alley, a T alley intersection, which previously that site did not have an easement for the water line that's located on the south end of our site, which is the city's water line. But we did create an alley there for that convenience, so it's, it'll now be there for access, you know, if the water line needs to be worked on. We are looping the water line, just for references, from the north end down to that T intersection there, and then all these lots will have utilities. Electrical has already been installed out there on the site, so, so the developer has already done, you know, his due diligence. The deal was is that his intent in the beginning was to do residential development, but he did want to do duplexes, townhomes along the Conover side. Well, FS3 no longer allows for that, so that's why we're requesting the change to PD. Now, we did think about doing SPD, but we're advised just to go to the PD, through the Planning Department, so that's the reason for that request. There is SPD, which is Special Residential Development, located just to the west of our property, along that same area. So there are some pockets of SPD throughout that area. So what we're trying to do is Crockett is located to the south of us, so we're trying to get a little bit more dense development in this lot, and then it'll transition down into all your single-family houses that are located to the north. And then, as I mentioned before, he wanted to do single families on the interior part of that cul-de-sac, which is in line with what was going around on that end. But since we are on the cul-de-sac, he, with PD, it'll still allow us, you know, the ability that if we did do townhouses, townhouses on the interior part of that cul-de-sac, that they're pretty isolated, that's not outside along the rest of that block. What, what these townhouses would look like vaguely, the reason for, and Maria mentioned it, is that we did not submit a site plan because now we're putting some burden on the developer, which he'd have to pay us to do that site plan, and then if this PD change was not granted, then we're out a lot of money on developing townhouses versus, you know, we can easily do single-family residential houses on the other end, but he wouldn't have to pay twice. So the reason for, for not submitting the site plan is to present this to the board for the request for the PD zoning, and then once, once if an adit, it's approved, then we'll move forward with the site plan. We will submit that to the Planning Department prior to requesting any of the permits for construction. Once that site plan is approved, then we'll proceed forward for the permits for construction for the, for these, these structures. And then, just to kind of give an idea of what they, those might look like, maximum, they will be two stories is what we requested. That's only, that's the only way we can fit them in there. They will be one unit with two residences on that one unit. Per our plat, we, we did platten, and we do have side yard setbacks and rear yard setbacks, so we're going to adhere to all of that. We will adhere to all of the regulations and, and items that need to be adhered to per all the development within the city. But like I said, I can pass these to you guys to kind of let you see what possibly they could look like. Here, here's another, here's another one, but yeah. And then I do have a couple, just set of copies right there.
It is a pretty busy street during school year. It's, what about parking?
So parking is going to be all onsite. So the requirement for parking is you still, if you did a residential structure, you have to have two, two spaces per structure. So we will adhere to all of that. So off-street or on-street parking is not part of the, the site plan that we'll submit. It'll all be onsite. And then, the other thing is, is we were asked if we were going, going to have rear parking, which we won't, because the reason being, if we did, we'd have to pave the whole alley. Well, there's no use in paving, the one from, on the south end wouldn't be so bad because part of it's already paved, but the one traveling north and south would, would be an issue because that paving would, would deaden into an unpaved alley that's going up towards the north. So there's no reason to, to have rear access, you know. It's just the cost incurred that he wouldn't want to make to have to pave the whole alley.
On the single five, family side, you said, on the cul-de-sac side?
Uh, no, the cul-de-sac side has to be paved.
Okay.
So we are introducing on that end, new paving, new curb and gutter, and sidewalk all the way through that whole cul-de-sac. And so, all, all of that has already been approved, and we're just waiting for a permit to do the construction on that.
And on the Conover side, you're...
On the Conover side, we will have sidewalk, curb and gutter, but we will have, the access will be on the Conover side for parking for those residences along the Conover side.
So duplex units or the townhouse units are only on 4, 5, 6, and 7?
Uh, no, sir, since we requested the PD on, on lots 1 through 7, then we'd have the ability to still put some, some townhouses on the interior of that cul-de-sac, which would be, we could do it on lots 1 through 7, but he's not opposed that, it's, PD will still allow for single-family residences on, on the Cono, I mean, on the cul-de-sac side, which is the Fontana Avenue side. Now, the only way that he'll build the, the ones on the Conover street side first, and then still have the ability to say, you know what, I don't want to build any more townhouses, I'm just going to go single-family on the interior side. But we couldn't break it up to say, look, we, we just want to leave that SF3 and then leave this as PD. Uh, so, since the plat, since the plat was in its entirety, that's why we requested PD for all of it.
What's the living square footage?
So livable square footage, we're looking at, you know, minimum is, is 1,000 at the, at the base, 1,500 at the max. Yes, sir, so it's not, we're not putting some real small structures in there. We're, we're, you know, they're adequate size. Low maintenance, you know, zero maintenance on it pretty much, you know, just because of the way the sites are. So we're not trying to introduce, you know, a big yard for somebody to maintain or, or take care of. Uh, thi, this is more leaning towards, you know, first-time home that somebody's going to move into, or the, or the working class that, you know, individuals that come in and, and, you know, teachers, nurses, you know, that, that nature, that they just need a place to live instead of renting something, they can buy a townhouse and then, you know, have a facility. And then, like I said, Crockett's to the south of us, so, so we're not trying to introduce, you know, anything that would adversely affect the school. And then Pease Elementary also is to the south.
With ECISD, and you can hire some teachers.
That too, teachers.
That'd be perfect.
And he's been at it for a while. We've just, you know, hit roadblocks along the way, and so this, this plat was approved back in, you know, I forget what year it was, but it's been, it's been a while since it's been approved. But even prior to that, we probably lasted a good year trying to get it, get that approved. And so, and like I said, it was just a...
I think we've heard, heard enough.
Yeah, yeah.
So we can kind of, kind of move on.
Okay.
Just summarizing, at the very end, you indicated these will be properties for sale, not rented.
Yes, they will be for sale, yes, sir.
Right, now, I would ask if there's anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak in favor of or in opposition to this matter? Now's the time to come forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Wait, you know, you know, routine, step up podium, give us your name.
It was approved on April 7, 22 for single-family homes. I own a house just to the north of it that I'm moving back into, that I built in 77. And everything in those areas are about 1,500 feet, and you're going to put something smaller in there. Plus, and that cul-de-sac area is right next to my house, and there's no off-street parking, I mean, on-street parking. If they put two, you know, with the driveways and stuff, there's no place to park in the street, so it's going to force the people that live there to either park in the school parking lot, which there's going to be a cyclone fence there that they can't walk through to, or it's going to put them in front of our houses if they have company or, you know, I mean, you, you start off usually with two cars, then you have kids, you got three cars. You may have four cars, where are they going to put the other cars if there's no off, you know, on-street parking? I mean, I'm far...
Well, there's not the on-street parking in the cul-de-sac?
In the cul-de-sac. I'm far single-family. I voted far.
The pictures that we saw each had garages.
Well...
In a driveway, it looks like.
Yeah, but still, you've got, if you have company, you're going to have people parking in the street, and they're going to be ending up parking, and if they have more than two cars, they're going to be, end up parking in front of the people in the circle on Fontana. If they want to put single-family in the cul-de-sac, I'm far it. But I'm not far the duplexes. I mean, you know, I've owned a property since 1977, and, you know, I'm far developing it. But it was approved for single-family back then. And now, all of a sudden, they want to throw a curveball and put duplexes in there of 1,000 feet, when you've got 1,500-foot houses or bigger in the area.
Thank you, Paul.
And, you know, that's my biggest complaint. I mean, I want it developed, don't get me wrong. I'm tired of the dirt. I'll tell you, Jimmy, back 20 years ago, 15, 18 years ago, I could have bought that drill site and a lot over on Alameda for $1,500. And you told me not to do it because it could have chemical contamination. Okay, I'm the one who brought up the chemical contamination. Uh, back in '22, y'all were supposed to get a, you know, a certificate that there wasn't any chemical, I mean, on the ground. And, uh, so, I mean, I didn't buy it, what I should have done. I should have bought it, gave the acreage or the drill site to the school for parking, and kept the $1,500 lot over on Alameda and sold it years later. You know, it was back when they were giving away stuff here, when, you know, but you did tell me not to buy it because of the fact that...
Would like you to.
You know, that I'd be responsible for cleaning it if I bought it. So there we are. And it does have an abandoned well right in the middle of it, and whose house is going to be built over the abandoned well? That's the thing, I mean, I bought it, the reason I bought it, my dad had twin sisters that married brothers, okay? And the third brother...
Oh, I think, I think we've heard enough.
Well, but I mean, he condemned it. But anyway, I mean, I'm far the development of the single-family on the cul-de-sac, but I don't want duplexes because there's no parking in front of our houses if they have company.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else in the audience today that would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to this matter? All right, seeing that there's no one else coming forward, I will close the public discussion on this case file, turn to the commission and ask if there's any discussion.
I'm still a little confused on this, and I'm maybe a little... They're okay with single, the developer prefers to have the duplex on these three lots, but he's okay with being single-family on the first, front three lots? He just wants to make sure he's got the duplexes on the back four lots, or the ones on...
I think it's the opposite.
On the Conover side?
No, he wants the, he wants the duplexes on the, on the, on the...
Conover.
Conover.
But not on Fontana.
And single...
Just single family.
Single family on the cul-de-sac.
But he's held his options open on the cul-de-sac, whether to use single-family or duplex. That's going to be up to the city, if we approve it, it's up to the city and their site plan, if I understand.
Yes, when they bring in the site plan, we do have to make sure that each unit has two vehicle parking spaces. Um, so he's going to have to make sure that it's built to, to accommodate, if the garage holds one vehicle, the driveway has to be sufficient enough to hold another.
We're only talking about one, one parking spot. So they could fill the garage full of junk. It doesn't really matter if it's for parking or not.
Okay, so you've got the single-family, well, if, if you turn them into duplexes, each duplex would have a single parking space?
Each duplex has to have, has to accommodate two vehicles. The one in the garage and the one in the driveway, in the driveway, actually.
One-car garage?
Well, in the photo, do you want to bring those back up?
So, so it's, it's the garage plus one single, and one single here. So it's really just like one single and then one single spot. So the garage and then one single. That photo looked like it had two.
Yeah.
So the photo you were showing us had two, so it was actually three.
Here, they have the garage, and then they have the parking.
A space for a second vehicle.
Yeah. This was showing... That's two, that's a drive, that's like, that's a sidewalk.
Yeah, sidewalk.
Could rear, rear entry garages solve the problem?
No, because they have no way to get in, there's no alley. It's no pavement, oh, there is an alley?
But maybe they can pave it.
He's not going to go to the expense of paying it, yeah.
No, I think, I think, let's see if there are any other discussion. Not as I recall, you've got any other discussion other than parking? Any other comments?
One garage for this people, and then one garage for the other side.
It would look like two, but it is...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, I just feel like in any neighborhood, if someone has a party, you dig it, you do get some overflow, some people park in front of your house.
Yeah.
I don't know that, I mean, I don't know that anybody likes that, but I don't think you can help that if it's a public road.
Public streets.
Yeah, it's, it's on the street, they're not on your property. Um, unless they're blocking your driveway, right, so...
It's not.
We hear your concern, but I don't know that we can help that in any neighborhood.
The, the front could be the, the townhouses, but the back part, the cul-de-sac would just have to be single-family. That would solve his, his issue or his problem. That's what, he's not against it, he just wants, doesn't want the duplexes on the back because of the parking.
Right, but what we're doing is rezoning, so they can do that if they decide to.
So it's going to be up to the staff to fight that battle if we approve it?
Yes.
Can we restrict the zoning in the, in the back part? Um, to restrict zoning, it would have to, you, they would have to represent, present it once again to, to modify the zoning that they're requesting at this time. By zoning ordinance, I will tell you that each unit requires two vehicle parking spaces. Most of the time, what they do is they put a garage to hold one, and the driveway has to be nine by 18, which is, which fits another vehicle.
Thank you.
Do we have someone else that's...
We've already closed public.
We've already closed public, okay.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
I didn't call for, I didn't call for comments. So we, the public portion of this matter has been closed. Any further discussion from the commission? Anybody want to make a motion? Anybody want to make a motion? Make that motion.
Okay, I make a motion to approve.
And I have a motion to approve. Case file number twenty-two-four dash zero-three-Z is presented. Is there a second?
A second.
Have motion second, all in favor say aye.
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 All in favor say no?
No.
No.
All right. I guess it's up to me. I'm going to say no and ask, just go back to drawing board. Figure out how we can make everybody happy if possible.
I don't, I still don't understand why they can't build a single-family on the front three.
So have vote, uh, two in favor, three against. Okay, going on now to case file number twenty-two-four dash seventeen-Z.
Do you want a, uh, motion?
Oh. I thought we had made a motion.
Okay, sorry.
It voted down two to three.
Okay.
All right, on case file number twenty-two-four dash seventeen-Z. This public hearing to consider approval of a request of DJK Incorporated for a zone change from future development to PDH Plan Development District Housing on an eighty-three point one seven acre surface tract located in section eleven, block forty-one, T two S, T N P Railroad Company Survey. Uh, properties in the city of Midland, uh, city of Odessa, Midland County. Generally located on the north side of West County Road one-twenty-two, approximately three hu- three thousand nine hundred fifty feet east of Melanie Lane. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission. The applicant is DJK Incorporated is requesting a zone change for future develop- from future development district to planned, uh, development, uh, housing on an eighty-three point seventeen surface acre tract located in section eleven, block forty-one, T two S, T N P Railroad Company Survey, city of Odessa, Midland County, Texas. The surrounding land uses are to the north, um, future development, to the east, future development south, future development and planned development housing and west, future development and future development district drill reservation. The property involved in this request is located on the north side of West County Road one-twenty-two, approximately three thousand nine hundred fifty feet east of Melanie Lane. The site is currently designated future development district and is, and consists of vacant and undeveloped land. The applicant, DJK, with agent LCA, is seeking a zone change for residential development in the area. Each lot will consist of residential, single-family housing use, save for two lots to be used as parks. Lots will follow the setbacks as recorded on the location's plat. Using the city's identified priorities contained in the city of Odessa's comprehensive plan to evaluate zoning amendments, and the fol- the following comments are offered. For comprehensiveness, the request is not out of line with the city of Odessa's comprehensive plan. The property is located near PDH Plan Development Housing. For livability, the proposed zoning would not have a negative impact on the site or surrounding properties. The pro- proposed planned development housing use type is not out of line with future development plans in the area. For reasonableness, the proposed zoning district will facilitate a reasonable transition between land uses of varying intensities and would not create a conflict to the existing land uses in the area. By planning, um, the requirements from planning, uh, shall submit a site plan required for planned development zoning. The required site plan ordinance shall set forth the requirements for street, right-of-way, drainage, utility sidewalks, screening requirements ingress and egress to the property and shall comply with the area standards specified for the specific types of uses proposed as set forth in the area standards for a planned development district in sections fourteen dash seven-one and fourteen dash seven-two or with such more restrictive area standards are set forth in the amending ordinance and with the height and vehicle parking regulations are set forth in sections fourteen dash eight through fourteen dash nine-two. Or with such resident restrictive height and parking regulations are set forth in the amending ordinances fourteen dash two dash four C. If approved, the planning recommends, the planning department recommends the following conditions, A through D, that shall adhere to setbacks as recorded on the property's plat. The administrative site plan approval shall be required prior to submission of building permit application. Shall comply with all fire and building inspections codes and ordinances and shall comply with planned development district standards and regulations. And I'm here for any questions.
Right, property just north of there is, is being developed SPD. But immediately south, there's a huge tract that is PDH, so it's.
Correct.
In an appropriate neighborhood.
Yes.
Any questions of staff? If there are no questions staff, then I'll open up this to public discussion. Uh, this matter is, uh, submitted to the public hearing. I'll ask if anybody's in favor of or in opposition to this case file, you should come forward now. Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to close, uh, public hearing on twenty-two-four seventeen-Z and turn to the commission and ask if there's discussion or motion.
I move, I move to approve case file number twenty-two-four dash seventeen dash Z.
County moves, is your second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign? Okay. Going on now to case file twenty, twenty-four dash eighteen-Z. This is a public hearing to consider approval of the request of D.R. Horton, Texas, LTD for a zone change from future development to SPD, Special Dwelling District on eight point two-three acres of land in section forty-five, block forty-one, T two S, T N P Railroad Company Survey. Property generally located southeast of the, uh, intersection of Deer Creek Ranch Road and Yukon Road. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Chairman and Commission. We did send out notices, uh, twenty-four notices, three were denied, zero approvals and zero protests. I'm sorry, uh, twenty-four was sent, three were denied, uh, zero were approved and zero were returned. And I'll pass those in just a moment. The applicant, D.R. Horton, Tech- uh, Horton, Texas, LTD, is requesting a zone change from future development district to SPD, Special Dwelling District on an eight point twenty-three acre tract located on section forty-five, block forty-one, T two S, T N P Railroad Company Survey, Odessa, Ector County, Texas. The property involved in this request is located on the southeast corner of the intersection of Deer Creek Ranch Road and Yukon Road. The site is currently designated future development and consists of vacant and undeveloped land. The applicant, uh, D.R. Horton, with agent LCA, is seeking a zone change for development of residential use in the area. Each lot is anticipated to consist of residential, single-family housing use. Lots will follow the setbacks as recorded on the location's plat. Each unit will be approximately sixteen hundred square feet and will, it will be one-story in height. Additionally, each unit will include a two-car garage accessible from the alley. Using the city's identified priorities contained in the city of Odessa's comprehensive plan to evaluate zoning amendments, the following comments are offered. For comprehensiveness, this request is not out of line with the city of Odessa's comprehensive plan. The property is located near existing, uh, special dwelling district. Use for livability, the proposed zoning will not have a negative impact on the site or surrounding properties and the proposed residential development is not out of line with the development in the area. Reasonableness, the proposed zoning district will facilitate a reasonable transition between land uses of varying intensities and would not create a conflict to the existing land uses in the area. An affidavit from planning, the request is an affidavit from the applicant verifying the ownership of the property and providing evidence of authority by the applicant to pursue plating of the property. That has already been submitted. And the SPD zoning requires fifty foot, fifty foot lot width. Uh, we have discussed that with the consultant. If approved, planning recommends the following conditions, A through C, that the consultant or the developer shall adhere to the setbacks as recorded on the property's plat, that shall comply with all fire and building inspection codes and ordinances and shall comply with special dwelling district ordinance requirements for type use housing. And I'm here for any questions. Here are the protests.
If SPD is approved, could they build two stories?
Well, um, SPD allows for two-story. Um, however, if, uh, if the commission decides, you know, we can add another condition indicating one story, if they want to stick to that one story, then that's going to be part of the, the conditions that we, we place when they submit their site plan.
Okay, and this would go back to planning and zoning department for a site plan?
Yes, the, they would have to come back to, uh, planning and zoning for a administrative site plan, which will be routed through, uh, the internal departments.
Not coming back to us, but to staff?
To, yes.
So you guys would make the final decision about the designs of the property?
Well, we won't make the decision. We'll go, if it's SPD, we'll go, um, we'll follow the ordinance as to what SPD requires with, with the conditions. With the conditions, yes. Place those as conditions on the, uh, for the plat, or the zoning.
That's a good idea. Do not be two-story. Can we go before a public? I'm taking the other parent's, they're going to ask questions.
Now, the width, you mentioned that the lots had to be at least fifty feet. And wide, right?
So special development, uh, district allows for fifty-foot width lots. They have to be fifty feet in width.
Well, it looks like some of these lots on the flat, if I'm seeing it, are not that wide.
That's not correct.
Hold on, can you just a second? Actually, let's see. I think we discussed it with the developer. And if I'm not mistaken, the forty-foot width is the most, uh, required. Sorry, I don't have that list in front of me, I do apologize.
Do you want, once you look at that and we'll come, come back to you and I'll open again for the public, if there's anyone in the audience today that will speak in favor of and opposition to that, please go forward. Give us your name, please.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Levi Bryant. I'm with LCA, the consultant for D.R. Horton on this. Uh, after speaking with Maria, SPD zoning allows for single-family attached housing as low as twenty-foot wide lots. These are townhomes. We're offering thirty-five-foot wide lots. Um, and the floor plans, I believe, and a site plan were provided in y'all's packet as well uh, when we submitted this application. Uh, and my understanding is these are just be one-story at this moment. Um, with the, the very, uh, the floor plans that were provided is the same product that we'll be using here as well. Um, so thirty foot, thirty-five-foot wide lots fits with the SPD zoning, which is why we zone to that. Otherwise, if that wasn't the case, we would have gone to a different zoning package or a different zoning area designation.
So you are good with the single-story?
Yes.
Well, I've got you up there. Um, one of the comments had to do with safety and infrastructure. Uh, the, uh, the infrastructure was not there yet for additional housing.
Traffic.
Traffic.
I can say that.
There won't be access to, direct access to Yukon.
Absolutely not, yeah. That's a, that's a comment that Public Works has already made and imposed on this. And I think that site plan says, uh, there will be no direct access to Yukon Road. Um, and in fact, there'll be a screening wall in between our development and Yukon, uh, as well.
To have Kate Reid drive in, in Deer Creek.
So they would have to drive back through the neighborhood to exit out of the?
They would have to exit out, I believe, either east or west to get to, um.
On Deer Creek Ranch Road?
Uh, Deer Creek Ranch Road, correct. They'd have to exit to the south in order to get to Yukon Road if they wanted to.
Yeah, but they, they can go north to Yukon, but they also have the ability to go on either side.
There will not be a driveway from this development to Yukon.
What, Deer Creek Road?
Those are already existing public roads, so we'd be tying to that. But we would not be allowed to have a direct driveway from these townhomes to Yukon, if that makes sense.
Right, yeah, it, everybody has to exit on Deer Creek Ranch Road.
Correct, correct.
And then they have access to Kate Reid and Deer Creek Ranch Road, which go either south or north.
Correct. Um, I will also say this property has been master-planned by the land developer and has been known for some time to be either mixed-use or a higher, uh, density family residential. Um, and it does serve as a buffer from the retail that, uh, is future planned to the north of Yukon Road as well.
Where's this road?
And Deer Creek Ranch Road, so there's ten homes there. Is that the front of their homes or that's the back? Sorry, I can't tell from the. It's your, it's the back?
Each unit would have a two-car garage and they'd be rear-entry off the alleyways as well.
Okay.
Um, and then the fifty-foot public right-of-way is in front of the house, so that would be, um, parking as well for any visitors or guests that they might have. And I, if I believe, there's also some additional right-of-way that we're putting in there that, uh, uh, townhomes aren't facing, so that increases the availability of parking as well for this site.
Will there be a, a wall on, to, to separate that on Deer Creek Ranch Road?
No, that would be, uh, there'd be the, the fencing for those specific lots, like a wood picket fence on that side.
Uh-huh.
Uh, but the wall, the screening law would just be along Yukon.
On Yukon.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, absolutely. Any further questions? Mr. Peacock?
Um, I don't, I don't think I have any. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, have, Maria, would you?
Oh, I was just going to say that, yes, twenty-five foot is the required setback in SPD, so.
And the width of the lot, it could be as low as twenty-five?
The twenty-five, I'm sorry, the twenty-five-foot width is what's required. Yeah, the, uh, on a residential lot, twenty-five-foot width is the setback as well.
Great, okay, thank you. Right, is there anyone like to speak in favor of, in opposition? Please go forward and give us your name.
Yes, my name is Chris McDowell. I live at seventy-two oh-three La Escalar Ranch, which is the street that is directly south of Deer Creek Ranch. The rear of all of our homes are on Deer Creek Ranch, so.
I live at a seventy-two oh seven La Escalar Ranch Road, which is, uh, on the south side of Deer Creek Road. My backyard butts directly up to the proposed area that is being requested. Um, it was initially said, and I guess, uh, a sales pitch that was used was that these were considered to be premium lots for the individuals that were to purchase them, and that there were no future plans for the vacant lot that's out there. Secondly, if, uh, you could go back to the page where it shows the, the plot and everything, all the streets that are, all the streets typically run, um, east to west, these will run north to south. If for any specific reason something were to happen, I have children that play out in the backyard, as does he and everybody else in the neighborhood. I would hate for somebody to drive directly through my fence and hit one of my children. Uh, secondly, I know the, it was voiced already about entry and exit, uh, on, uh, at the end of Deer Creek Street. On the west side is, uh, an exit area there. There's, it's already existing, but it's a two-lane highway, uh, which is Yukon Road. Looking right, you are unable to see any traffic through shrubbery, brushes, any type of landscaping that's that direction, uh, heading towards the west from there. Uh, unfortunately, also, there's a school that has been built over there, uh, on the east side of that as well, and that typically is a very congested area as well, particularly in the mornings and when everybody else is commuting to and from work. Um, lastly, I, I will mention, uh, parking and safety concerns. As this other gentleman mentioned a second ago, there have been two incidents. One of the incidents in particular was involving a City of Odessa employee. Um, just wanted to bring that to, to light and let you guys know. Uh, everybody in the neighborhood is relatively concerned about that, as well as parking issues that could potentially take place as well. Um, there's, you know, in front of our houses, there's two lots there. We get, um, sand haulers and, uh, vac, vac trucks and whatnot, what have you there in that area as well. So, uh, my main concern is for the children of the neighborhood as well, and their safety and all those concerns. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate each of you.
Appreciate your comments. Uh, again, we're still in the public, uh, portion of this discussion. Is there anyone else in the audience here today that wants to speak in favor of, or in opposition to case file number twenty-two-four dash eighteen Z? Signal one, come forward. I will close the public portion of this hearing. In turn, commission, see if there's any discussion, questions, or do we need to bring staff back up? Now, standing ready for motion.
I move for approval of this case file as presented, with the stipulation that they remain as single as one-story units.
Have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion second? All in favor, say aye.
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 Nay.
Okay, good. Three to one, motion passes. And that was the last of the public hearings, uh, under miscellaneous, uh, number nine on the agenda. Case file number twenty-two-four dash one oh two P. This involves a proposed preliminary plat of shallow retail third filing, being a one-point-seven-five-acre tract land located in section four, block forty-one, T two S, T P Railway Company Survey. Property is located on the east side of North Vaudry Road and approximately one hundred feet south of River Oaks Drive. Yes, sir?
Thank you, Chairman and Commission. Um, the applicant, owner, Wiley and Fredna Brown Family Partnership, LTD with consultant L.C.A., are seeking to a primary plat to create two lots for retail development. Staff recommends approval of the primary plat of shallow retail third filing, subject to condition A. We're now open for questions.
Okay, you might have questions. No questions, okay. I'm ready for a motion.
Move to approve case file number twenty-two-four dash one oh two dash P.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Moving on, case file number twenty-two-four dash one oh seven P. Proposed preliminary plat of homestead townhomes at Parks Bell, first filing, being eight-point-two-three acres of land, section forty-five, block forty-one, T two S, T P Railway Company Survey. Property generally located southeast of the corner of intersection of Deer Creek Ranch and Yukon Road.
Thank you, Chairman and Commission. Uh, the applicant, owner, D.R. Horton, Texas, LTD with consultant L.C.A., are seeking to plat to create fifty-seven lots for single-family attached townhome development. Staff recommends approval of the primary plat of homestead townhomes at Park Bell Ranch, second filing, subject to condition A. We're now open for questions.
Any questions?
Move to, move to approve case file number twenty-two-four dash one oh seven dash P.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes?
It's the same development, isn't it?
Near.
Near.
Aye.
Okay, all right, motion passes. Moving on, case, this is number twelve on the agenda. Case file number twenty-two-four dash one oh nine P. This involves a preliminary plat of Deer Meadows Edition, second filing, phase one, being eighty-three-point-one-seven acres in section eleven, block forty-one, T two S, T P Railway Company Survey. City of Odessa, Midland County, generally located on the north side of West County Road one-twenty-two, uh, three-hundred-and-fifty feet east of Melanie Lane. We're on the other side of one-ninety-one now.
Thank you, Chairman and Commission. Uh, the applicant, owner, D.J.K., Incorporated with consultant L.C.A., are seeking to plat to create seven-hundred-and-sixty-two lots for ownership purposes. Staff recommends approval of the primary plat of Deer Meadows Edition, second filing, phase one, subject to condition A. We're now open for questions.
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
I second.
All right, that motion second to approve this plat for seven-hundred-and-sixty-two lots. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we go on now to next matter. Case file number twenty-two-four dash one-one-zero P. This property is in the ETJ. This involves a motion for the proposed preliminary plat of Veach Acres, being a plat of seven-point-five-nine-seven acres in section thirty-two, block forty-three, T two S. Uh, property is generally located on the west side of South Mox Avenue, being approximately one-hundred-and-forty feet south of West Deer Block. Yes, sir?
The applicant, or, thank you, Chairman and Commission. The applicant and owner, Hing Mokah, with consultant Skyline Civil Group, are seeking to plat to create two lots for ownership purposes. Staff recommends approval of primary plat of Veach Acres, subject to condition A. We're now open for questions.
Any questions?
Is this a good motion?
Move for approval.
Have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion, two seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. All right, we're now...
Is this the one we're taking away? Are we taking this one away, or the next one?
Uh, worst sound, number, case file number twenty-two-four dash one-eleven. Has that been withdrawn?
Um, the consultant has requested this one would be withdrawn. Um, they are trying to modify the initial preliminary plat that was submitted. Um, they did send us a notification by email. Um, I think they should be present as well.
She's back there.
She's way in my back room.
Here's their email where they have submitted their questions.
Okay. All right, do we need to make a motion, or anything to make this formal?
They can make a motion? Okay.
All right, is there a motion to accept the withdrawal of this, uh...
Make a motion, we accept the withdrawal. That's precedent.
Is there a second? I have a motion second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Then the last two files, case file number twenty-two-four dash one oh three P. This involves, uh, Eastover Edition, replat A, being lots twelve through twenty-one, block two, Eastover Edition, to the City of Odessa, County, generally located on northeast corner of intersection of Pittsburgh Avenue and Eighth Street. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission. Uh, the applicant and owner, D.J.K., Incorporated with consultant L.C.A., are seeking to plat to create seven-hundred-and-sixty-two lots for ownership purposes. Staff recommends approval of the primary plat of Deer Meadows Edition, second filing, phase one, subject to condition A. We're now open for questions.
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
I second.
All right, that motion second to approve this plat for seven-hundred-and-sixty-two lots. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we go on now to next matter. Case file number twenty-two-four dash one-one-zero P. This property is in the ETJ. This involves a motion for the proposed preliminary plat of Veach Acres, being a plat of seven-point-five-nine-seven acres in section thirty-two, block forty-three, T two S. Uh, property is generally located on the west side of South Mox Avenue, being approximately one-hundred-and-forty feet south of West Deer Block. Yes, sir?
The applicant, or, thank you, Chairman and Commission. The applicant and owner, Hing Mokah, with consultant Skyline Civil Group, are seeking to plat to create two lots for ownership purposes. Staff recommends approval of primary plat of Veach Acres, subject to condition A. We're now open for questions.
Any questions?
Is this a good motion?
Move for approval.
Have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion, two seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. All right, we're now...
Is this the one we're taking away? Are we taking this one away, or the next one?
Uh, worst sound, number, case file number twenty-two-four dash one-eleven. Has that been withdrawn?
Um, the consultant has requested this one would be withdrawn. Um, they are trying to modify the initial preliminary plat that was submitted. Um, they did send us a notification by email. Um, I think they should be present as well.
She's back there.
She's way in my back room.
Here's their email where they have submitted their questions.
Okay. All right, do we need to make a motion, or anything to make this formal?
They can make a motion? Okay.
All right, is there a motion to accept the withdrawal of this, uh...
Make a motion, we accept the withdrawal. That's precedent.
Is there a second? I have a motion second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Then the last two files, case file number twenty-two-four dash one oh three P. This involves, uh, Eastover Edition, replat A, being lots twelve through twenty-one, block two, Eastover Edition, to the City of Odessa, County, generally located on northeast corner of intersection of Pittsburgh Avenue and Eighth Street. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission. The applicant and owner is Eastdale Medina with consultant S.L.I. Engineering, are seeking to replat to combine ten lots into one for ownership purposes. Um, the area, this request has been routed to all respective departments for internal review, and we have, um, let me see here. The staff recommends approval of the replat Eastover Edition, subject to conditions A through D. A, add two G.I.S. points on the plat. Two, B, drainage calculation indicate commercial drainage to the alley. Alley will need to be paved and submit plans for review and acceptance. C, an improvements agreement will be required for alley paving. And D, approval of this replat is subject to all plat comments, conditions, and requirements being satisfied by all pertinent city departments before filing for accreditation with the county clerk of Hector County, Texas. And I'm here for any questions.
Are there any questions?
Nope.
No questions, is there a motion?
Move to approve case file number twenty-two-four dash one oh four dash P.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Number two, case file number twenty-two-four dash one oh four P. Uh, this involves College Lands Edition, second filing, being a replat of lots one through seven, block sixty-four, seven except the north, one-third of lots one through three, block sixty-four. Uh, College Lands, uh, in volume one, page sixty-four, plat, uh, deed records. Uh, property is located on the southeast corner of the intersections North Lee Street and West Thirteenth Street. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission. The applicant and owner, Romeo Trevino Junior, with consultant S.C.A., are seeking to replat seven lots for, lots into three for lots, into three lots for ownership purposes. This, uh, report has, this request has been routed to all respective departments for internal review, and, um, the staff recommends approval of the replat College Lines Edition, second filing, subject to conditions A through E. The conditions are that tax statements will be required prior to P and Z approval. Um, they have submitted those. A drainage report needs to be submitted. Right-of-way improvements needed on lot sixteen, and improvements agreement may be required. An approval of this replat is subject to all plat comments, conditions, and requirements being satisfied by all pertinent city departments before filing for accreditation with the county clerk of Hector County, Texas. And I'm here for any questions.
Any questions?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, let's go home.
Thank you.
Thank you.